2023. At the record show, we started at 5:33. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 16, 2022, signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. Until March 31, 2023, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast in simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. Good evening, everyone. And the first item of business, we'll take a roll call. Mr. Metters?
Present.
Mr. Shell?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. DeCastro?
Present.
And the Chair, Mr. Dykens is present as well. Next item is the minutes of January 3, 2023, a motion.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any other further edits? Mr. DeCastro?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three small ones. On page four, second paragraph from the bottom, which begins, Mr. Beistrom said, "I didn't check the video, but my recollection is that Attorney Litchfield also addressed the issue of the width of, the subject of the width of the road, and maybe that should just be, whatever he said should be included responsively." On page five, right up at the top in the first line, the motion, that was brought by me. And then finally, on page nine.
Good catch.
This is a question to Shana. So before we convened the Affordable Housing Trust, do we typically also indicate that the board itself adjourned its own meeting?
Not in general, no.
Okay. So there's no way to there then. Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other edits or suggestions? Okay. We'll take a vote. Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. DeCastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye as well. The next item on our agenda is our public announcements and agenda item requests. If anybody has an agenda item request, I think there's one out there, and/or any announcements from the board or agenda item requests from the board. Mr. DeCastro, why don't you go, and then we'll have Mr. Hosmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. First, this is an agenda item request. The Council on Aging is interested in hearing back from the board the results of any, of the preliminary inquiry or investigation that Terry Whelan was going to make relative to the suitability of the Marconi III property for a site for the Center for Active Living. And I have mentioned this to Jill, and I wanted to see if we could get an update from the Town Manager and Terry at some point soon.
Absolutely.
The second is simply, congratulations to the town's representatives to the Assembly of Delegates, Randy Potash, on being elected as the Deputy Speaker of the Assembly. That's a good thing for the town, and we appreciate her work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. DeCastro. Yeah, that, thank you. Yeah, that's great. Congratulations, Randy. Mr. Hosmer? You've been a busy guy today.
Well, you know, I'm gonna tell you.
Doing your duty.
Busy day. Thank you for letting me speak briefly here, Dick Hosmer. I'm speaking on behalf as Chairman, actually, of the Waterways Advisory Committee. My agenda for the 19th is an open discussion, or opening a discussion on the town landings based on the 2011 report. It's something I've been trying to work on for a long time, and I, we finally, I think, have an opening from other things that we had to deal with. So what I would like to do, that'll be our starting point. We're going to discuss all the issues that we see as issues at the town landings. Access to the water, the condition of some of them, parking, because we still need to maintain access to the water. So it would cover all those items. I'm looking to get, I think you had talked about another committee, maybe looking at some of the parking issues. My suggestion might be that we take on that piece of it as part of our discussion as we move forward with this total assessment of the town landings. So I think I've also, and have talked to and will liaise with Lieutenant Goddard, Fire Chief Tavano, and the Shellfish Constable in this process as needed, so that we do this, we have access to the water that's open, and it's done in a safe and, you know, a manner that we include all the safety factors we need to at those town landings. So.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hosmer. I think that makes kind of, it's logical to me to kind of vet it there and have you guys weigh in on the town landings. I think you very much have a vested interest in their use and the utilization. I'm gonna turf it to, I'm gonna turf it to Ms. Davis first, because it was her motion that we accepted.
I'm fine with that, and I think that a report back from this committee, from the Waterways, however, I do want to note that this does sort of expand into maybe Park and Rec and a couple of others that might want to have some interest in looking at it. But I think in the intent of what I was trying to convey last week was that the landing master plan needs a look see, which is inclusive too, that the parking is inclusive into that, so it should be a holistic look.
Yeah, and I think the 2011 study's a great place to launch, see what, there may have been changes since then, a few years ago, but, and I have to go revisit it. I haven't looked at it in a long time, but I was very appreciative to get it in the email. Mr. DeCastro had his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Dick. Appreciate yours and your committee's willingness to get into this. And we do have a vote, a motion that was voted last week. I guess that should just stay in case we might want to use it in the future, implement it in the future. In addition, it sounds like you're going to include the two chiefs as the third person, I can't remember.
Renee.
Renee, and your deliberations.
And obviously, and any other departments that we need to. I just, I mean, I have talked to those three people, and they're aware of what I am proposing, so.
I would suggest, in addition to the Parks and Rec, as Shereen just pined, maybe you could include the Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee, because they're the ones that brought it forward.
I figured we would be doing that through.
Through Andy?
Through Andy, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't excluding anyone. I just.
No, that's fine.
Wanted to make sure we.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Davis?
I think it's also important Ted is involved in this, since he does a lot of the work on the landings.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, the Coastal Resource.
Ted Keon. Well, he will be as my, you know, staff liaison anyway.
All right.
And he is aware of this.
I wasn't sure who was, because you seem to have a lot of staff go to some of your meetings at times.
Another story.
Yeah.
Just an editorial comment. It's neat to have a committee come to us and say, we'd like to kind of take this work on. It's usually us saying, please go do this. So very much appreciated, Dick. It's thoughtful, and you know, you're a brave soul. But thank you very much.
We will get on it. I've already passed out to my committee two months ago, actually, the report, so hopefully they're reading it.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other announcements or agenda item requests from the Select Board, the folks here physically and/or virtually? Any, okay, I see none out there. This is time for a public announcements on our business agenda. We have one, a single business agenda this evening, which is the Town Manager's Fiscal Year 24 Operating and Capital Budget Summary and Recommendations for Fiscal Year 24. I see one hand up. I know it's EBG as Elaine Gibbs. Elaine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little hard. I don't know what the scope of your conversation is going to be tonight, so I am basing my comments on the last couple meetings where you discussed this. Two of my comments pertain to staff increases. The Airport Commission, it was put forward that an administrator be hired to be paid for by the town for, to handle public correspondence and records requests and those kind of administrative duties. I absolutely think that that should be paid for by the Airport Commission for a number of reasons. They have hired a public relations firm, and they've hired attorneys to defend and debate and promote their position when there are taxpayer concerns and complaints. And so I think it would be inappropriate for the town to pay for it. It should be a member of their staff. Otherwise, it's going to further remove them from the concerns that people particularly in that area have about the activities at the airport. If you have a town administrator doing that work, they may never even read the concerns or the complaints. It will all be handled administratively by a third party. So I would hope you reconsider that, and if they want it, I think it has to come out of their revolving fund. They get a fair amount of money in that account every year. The second one is regarding the short-term rental requests for one person for registration and inspections. I noted some reluctance by board members pushing back on that, and I'm concerned about that. I think it's short money, considering that once we get everybody registered and the program up and running, there's going to be significant additional monies available coming in as revenue that would cover that. Right now, there are 1,300, I believe, properties plus that are registered, and the Board of Health thinks there could be another 700. That's 2,000 potential properties in Chatham that are used on a short-term rental basis. That's, that's one-third of the homes, the residential properties in Chatham are being used for short-term rentals. I think the impact on our water supply alone is incalculable, particularly when there are homes being advertised that actually can sleep 31 people. And if you take two showers a day when you're on vacation, that's a lot of water. And so I would hope that you do support the idea of doing that. These are businesses being run in residential neighborhoods, and without having the inspection capacity done by the town, it should not have to fall to neighbors who may be in areas that are surrounded by short-term rentals with dozens of cars and noise and parking issues. That's a town responsibility. When the owners are not even present, it's very difficult, and it should not fall to, you know, butters and neighbors to have to complain. I think this is long overdue. Other towns have done it, and I think it's a start, and I would hope you would support that. And finally, there's just, there's one other program that I would like you to look at again. It's the Selden Preschool Support Program, which I think is an outstanding idea. It says in the description, it's for people who experience economic hardship and a direct feeder to Chatham Elementary. The problem is, on the application, there is no means testing. Anybody can apply for it who lives or works in Chatham, at least lives in Chatham. That means the parents could be making $400,000 or $500,000 if there's no means testing. And nowhere in the application does it say that they have to commit to sending their children to Chatham Elementary or the Montemoy School District. So I think it's a self-defeating program, the way it's written, where money could be better spent on, if you really want to encourage families to be part of the town, if people are applying and getting $15,000, $20,000 a year, and then they're sending their kids to private school, I think that defeats the entire purpose of the program. So I would hope that it gets refined a little bit to make sure the money is going to those who need it most. And then finally, in the value statements, there are 10 value statements, and I had asked that public health and safety be put on that list, and you did, but it's the last of 10. And I think that that is the single most important goal and responsibility of government, is public health and safety, because there are a lot of things, we can't turn on our power, and there are a lot of things that are outside of our control as it relates to public health and safety. So that's just a thought. So those are my comments, and I hope you will take them in the spirit they were given. Thank you very much.
Okay, Elaine, thank you. Okay. I believe at this point, I will, if there aren't any other hands up virtually or here, I'll turn it over to Jill Goldsmith, our Town Manager, and Alex Alila. Jill and Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we are going to present the FY 24 fiscal year, 24 budget, and that covers the period of July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. And tonight is the night we're going to debut our digital budget platform. So the plan for tonight is that Alex and I will give the presentation and then turn it over to our IT Director to introduce you and the public to the digital platform. You have a hard copy of the budget for FY 24. This will be accessible through online, so that you don't need to print it, but certainly it's available to you. And it's, we're really excited about this new platform. And then before I start with the budget presentation, Alex always looks back, but I want to look back to last week where Alex received a very prestigious award. It was a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is for the fiscal year 2021 budget and audit. That's the most recent one that could be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association, and this is a national entity. So it's very exciting for Alex to get this award. It's very exciting for the town to receive the excellence in financial reporting. It's something that's been a professional goal for Alex for at least the last 10 years, and it takes time and it takes investment, and I'm very excited to report that this is based on Alex's contribution as well as the town's finance team. So thank you, Alex.
Hey, Alex, congratulations. That's great.
Yeah, it's a big deal. It really is. All right. So here we are with FY 24, and this is the financial state of the town before you, and it's for our budget that we've themed strategic budgeting for the future. In the agenda packet that was posted online, there's a pretty substantial document that I just wanted to take some opportunity to just describe what it is. It's our transmittal that we do every year, and it's, there's a link on the screen for those, or they can, for those watching at home, where people can access it through the website. But there's a lot of work and effort to go into this transmittal that's, again, not just my and Alex's work. It's the entire team that puts it forward. And I just wanted to note just some of the components of the transmittal, and again, the document is with you. We look at our goals and objectives and value statements, and we tie it to the budget appropriation. So not only are we interested in day-to-day items that need to get done, but the budget itself should reflect priorities. And I believe that this budget for FY 24 and operating budget and capital budget definitely provide that strategic budgeting for the year. And we do this every year, but we don't necessarily call it out. So I did want to note that. So looking at goals and objectives, we reflect in the transmittal on the fiscal year 2023, that's our current fiscal year that we're six months into, and calendar year 2022. So in the budget document, you'll notice prior year accomplishments by each division, and that is a look back, and it's the top five accomplishments. We also show our community connections, our outreach, our initiatives, our economic conditions summary, which includes building activity, our FY 24 budget detail, which goes into revenues and expenditures explanations. We look at wage and salary overview and the explanation on the positions that have been requested in our recommendations. We also, in the transmittal, look at the educational budgets of Montemoy Regional as well as Cape Tech, the capital programming, including water. And then I provide status reports such as the wastewater program, the waterfront infrastructure projects update, renewable energy, climate change and coastal resiliency efforts, including grants, technology and online offerings, emergency management and generators. And all of this is something that you then look at for the next month and make a recommendation to the Finance Committee on or before March 1. So I just wanted to lay it out there, since there's a lot of work by so many that contribute to this. So now I can turn it over to Alex to start the presentation, and thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Jill. Yes, as we said, we sort of look back where we were for the current fiscal year and when we craft the FY 2024 budget. So looking back, we're still kind of in that continued COVID-19 financial plan. We're coming away from it, as you recall and as noted in the transmittal letter. Prior to COVID hitting, we were looking at a growth budget. We pivoted back to that, away from that, when COVID hit us in 2020 for the FY 2021 budget. And then in FY 2023, the current fiscal year, we did present a growth budget for the current budget, and we're looking at that again for FY 2024. But we're taking it slow. We didn't just jump in. So we've looked back, and we're looking forward again. Property values, as you know, remain high. We had the highest valuation ever. This is for FY 2023. Our tax rate is low. Again, when we talk at the budget summit, we talk about the tax bill for the person rather than tax rate, but a low tax rate does usually mean a lower tax bill. Our AAA bond rating, again, was affirmed in March 7, 2022, when we went out for refunding of our 2012 general obligation bonds, as well as some new borrowing. The reserves in FY 2023 are stable to FY 2022. We try not to draw on, we have not drawn on the stabilization fund, and we will not draw on the stabilization fund unless we absolutely need to. Capital projects, we look at what have been completed and where are scheduled out for the next five years. Our OPEB funding strategy has been very healthy in funding that liability. We review our budget and financial policies at the budget summit, as again, is when we present the budget, as we did a couple weeks ago. And then our budget summits, as I just mentioned, are our multi-year forecasts, which we hold every October. So in October 25, we had our 11th budget summit, again, collaboration, looking for a budget directive from the Select Board. We came down to strategic budgeting for the future. We talk about the budget process and the calendar. We look at trends both in revenue and expenses. We have a long-range forecast. We go out five years. We do a five-year forecast during the budget summit. And then any updates to the budget and financial policies. Again, looking back to FY 2021, budgeting in the unknown in response to COVID. In 2022, a COVID core services budget based on our favorable performance in FY 2021. FY 2023, budgeting for a resilient and sustainable future, a growth budget to sustain Chatham for the future. And then for FY 2024, again, strategic budgeting for the future. So where, how best does a budget address our future of Chatham? So the town's budgetary components are always, we start with a balanced budget. So our revenues have to support all the expenditures that are requested from the different department heads. As we've talked about in the past, we reach out to the department heads in October and November and have them submit all their requests, and then And then Jill and I meet with each of the department heads and run through what we propose in this budget tonight. But looking at that, we look at our revenue outlook, our tax levy, our local receipts, and our other available funds, which fund all the requests that we're putting forward. Expenditures, the general operating budget, our educational assessments, which are in draft form right now, the water operating budget funded through water rates, and the five-year capital plan funded through the use of available funds, namely free cash and some other available funds, no use of the tax levy. And then other capital and community priority items are those separate articles that are for consideration and capital priorities and the five-year capital plan, what's out there in the future, as well as what's being proposed for FY 2024. So the FY 2024 budget, again, the budget book contains the budget narratives, budget statements, organization charts, staffing history, the 2024 capital improvement plan, requests and inventory. And that's all in the digital budget book, which is new, and it's also available on Budget Central. And Budget Central has all the budgets going back over 10 years. And you can link the public and anyone can get through the link on our website. All these budget book, budget updates are posted there, multi-year financial forecasts, a fleet listing of all our vehicles, as well as the debt schedules. So again, the FY 2024 digital budget book looks a little bit different than what you're used to in the past. What's nice about this is that as the budget evolves through the budget process and things change, we can change it online, and then you can print out the new pages. And then when we come to the town meeting and the budget is approved, we can print out the final budget as it's approved without having to reprint the entire book. Just the certain pages can be reprinted, and it's all paginated. We have glossaries. The financial policies will be in there at one time. We'll have the multi-year debt forecast in there. And this is, as Jill mentioned, this is one of the things that we're striving to get an award again from the GFOA for our budget book. We have most of the information in there. There's just a few things that are missing. If you look at your budget book, and I'm sure Craig will go into this, there's lots of charts. And they're all supported by the detail that you're used to seeing. You'll just see it in a little different, different way. And comments can go in there, so it's, we're pretty excited about this. So moving right into the budget and the numbers. So again, we have, we're presenting a balanced budget for FY 2024. And again, it's a sustainable service budget. The operating budget is an increase of about 7.6% over the current fiscal year budget. So $37,761,514. So again, that is an increase. However, at this point, we are funding it with available revenues. So no increase to the tax rate, provided that the values stay the same. And usually if the values go up, the tax rate goes down. So we're trying to keep the tax rate as stable. And again, we've raised our local estimated revenues, which I'll go into in the future slides. The funding recommendations include enhanced staffing of seven and a half full-time equivalents, or FTEs, to carry out level and sustainable services. And that is one of the select board's priorities, objectives, and initiatives. Our capital plan, it's presented at $3,674,000, right at the 9% of Chatham's financial policies, 9% of the operating budget. And again, funded through free cash and other available funds, as has been the case in the past. So looking at the funding sources, revenues, so property tax, not really much of a change at all. We're looking at about an $18,000 increase over FY 2023. Local receipts, 21.5% increase over FY 2023. So $1.6 million more than we estimated last year for the current fiscal year. State aid at this time, we're keeping that at a level funds until the governor's budget comes out, usually in late January. Other available funds, again, almost a $2.4 million increase over the current year. And much of that is due to the use of free cash. And then the water fund, a small decrease. Funding for water capital mainly is the decrease in that budget. So that is a 6.45% change over the current fiscal year. And then again, the expenditures, municipal departments growing by about 7.75. School department, 1.75%, that's our assessment. Water department with capital, a decrease of about 11%. The capital budget, increase of 43.7%. Again, a lot of capital items being funded this year. Assessments, those might change as we move through the budget process. That also counts when the governor's budget comes out. And then other articles, we have its placeholders, 7.76% increase in those, about 470, just over 470,000. And those may change as we move through the budget discussions and the select board makes recommendations of what to move forward with and whatnot for those separate capital articles. What's not in here is we don't have any placeholders for water debt or wastewater debt or other debt service. So that's not in the placeholders right now. So our FY 2024 revenue. When we've shown this chart in the past years, usually you're looking at a tax levy of about 67% to 68%. So this year, it's only at 60%. And again, that is because of the increase in our local estimated receipts. And we feel that that can be supported due to the actual stuff come in. So again, allowable growth. We have proposition two and a half, plus our new growth is estimated at just under $1.3 million. Our local receipts, 85% year of prior actual, rather than 82% for FY 2023. We had 82% of prior actuals. So we've increased that moving forward. So we continue to monitor those for any trends. If we see it decreasing, then we can change this as we might need to. But right now, looking back three years, we had strong, especially with the hotel motel room occupancy tax and meals taxes. Again, state aid is level to the 2023 budget. And this shows where in, when the pandemic hit for FY 2021, we cut back those local estimated receipts. And these are again, what was estimated, not what was actually received. So we cut those way back. Then as we saw what came in for FY 2022, we increased those. In FY 2023, we increased those again more. And then for FY 2024, we've really bumped those up to reduce the amount that we raised through the tax levy. Our other available funds, the offsets, again, free cash. We're still waiting for certification of free cash. We did submit it. I've been told that we should have it shortly. So we're programming just under $8 million right now of free cash use. And that is to fund 3.4 million to fund the capital budget. We will be proposing a wastewater capital fund for the Harwich IMA funds. And that was the first that was received, the 2.265 million. We're expecting another million and a half any day now. So we'd like to put those into the wastewater capital fund for wastewater costs so we don't have to borrow for some of those items which don't qualify for the 0% loans through the state revolving fund. We're proposing an inflation article, a placeholder of $150,000. Not knowing what costs are doing, we're finding that every time we go out for a project, costs have increased. The Eldridge Public Library HVAC project, again, an amount to be determined. It was originally programmed for $1 million, but it's probably going to be well in excess of that. Again, that's one of those inflationary items. So we will have a number on that. And whether that's funded through the tax levy, free cash, a portion of both, we have to review that as we move forward through the budget process. We have a placeholder for housing, $500,000. So knowing that the select board has been very supportive of housing initiatives, we put that in as a placeholder. Whether you choose to move forward with that, we have that there. And again, the retirement trust as a placeholder for retirees when they leave service of the town. And we have to pay out some of those large contractual obligations. Some of the other available funds or offsets to the tax levy are receipts reserved for appropriation. You've seen these before. Our waterways improvement fund, programmed right now for $250,000. And that will fund Harbor Master capital and operating budgets. The Railroad Museum Fund, operating costs. I was reminded today that we had decided to increase that budget from 1,500 to 3,000. So this is where we can increase it very quickly in the budget book, the digital budget book. And you can print it out and see it right then and there. So that will go up to 3,000. In your budget book right now, it's at 1,500. But again, it's a one-for-one. It's an offset directly to their budget. PEG access funds, the cable funds, $150,000 for Channel 18 capital and operating budgets. And then we have the sale of lots and graves trust fund, $35,000, which usually funds cemetery capital and operating as well. Other available funds that typically are not budgeted here are revolving funds. So the recreation revolving for program costs, the shellfish revolving for propagation costs, as well as some of the shellfish constables. Chapter 90, the state highway fund. Again, we get about $350,000 of that a year for eligible projects. The Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, FY 2023 was our first year receiving for pre-existing debt. And so for the next, not for FY 2024 and eight years after that. So for 10 years, we're getting $615,160 to offset our debt service. So we've programmed that in to the FY 2024 budget. And then we have the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And tentatively, this is scheduled for a meeting on January 31st. And we'll talk about what we would like to see ARPA funds used for. The town currently gets, well, we currently have just over $600,000 in local ARPA funds. And then Barnstable County also has ARPA funds. And we would have to apply to them for use of those funds. And we'll look at that. The levy limit, so our levy limit is $44,974,000. And that includes the allowable 2.5% growth increase and then new growth, which is programmed at $375,000. We never taxed to the levy limit. And right now, if you look at the budget detail, we're estimating excess levy capacity of $5,600,000. And then our local estimated receipts, again, that's direct, reduces the amount that we have to raise through the levy. So that is why we're having the excess levy capacity. And then our other estimated available funds. Again, speaking of the local estimated receipts, and I touched based on the hotel motel tax, both short-term rentals and traditional rentals. And you can see the growth from 2021 to 2022. And these are for full-year actuals. So we got over $3.7 million in 2022. And that's why we're able to raise our estimates so much this year for FY 2024. And this has the, I know that we did raise the hotel motel tax from 4% local share to a 6% local share. However, that 2% is dedicated, has a dedicated purpose. So that will go 1% for housing initiatives and 1% to support the Chatham Elementary School. So that's not included in our projections for FY 2024 because that's a dedicated expenditure. It has to be reserved elsewhere. Revenue policy decisions, again, any revenue diversion. So if we carve out any revenue from the general fund and goes into a special revenue fund or receipts reserved for account, we have to look at how that impacts any estimated receipts. We're not forecasting any of that or programming any of that for FY 2024. Again, the short-term rental tax, the impact of short-term rentals and the impact of the tax. I know we've talked about the short-term rental registration or bylaw. I know the Short Term Working Group is working through that. And then the fiscal impact equity, the effective fees on the entire community. This is something we've been looking at for a couple of years, and we continue to still look at this. So our assumptions for FY 2024, again, increase our estimated local receipts, our policy of 85% of prior year actual, our room occupancy tax increase. Again, we just talked about that. The increase is by 2% to 6% for dedicated, well, the 2% is for dedicated purposes, and the 4% still belongs to the general fund. And then our expenditures, we look at our priorities, additional services, resiliency efforts, our long-term debt as per our schedules. And then our education budgets, both the Montemoy Regional School District Regional Agreement and the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School assessments to the town of Chatham. And again, talking about the 1%, that's a dedicated source for the Chatham Elementary School. We do have the five-year capital plan for the Chatham, from Montemoy Regional School District for the Chatham Elementary School. And there are some costs coming up in the future. We have 40, and we've listed that in the capital plan, even though it's not being funded there. But you will see those as a placeholder. So the FY 2024 budget overview, the operating town budget, $37,761,514. The school assessments, again, drafted at this time, $10,41,061, subject to change due to not being voted by the school committee yet, as well as we await the governor's numbers for the Chapter 78 that the school gets and our local minimum contribution that each of the member towns has to make towards the school budgets. The water budget, $3,915,551. Excuse me. And the capital budget, $3,674,000. And here's a pie chart showing the different departments. Education is included in here as well as some of the, not the assessments, but the education along with all the town departments. So you can see here, excuse me, education is 19%, DPW 16%, public safety 15%, and just the different pie charts. And these charts are available in the budget book as well. Hanging in there. I had a sore throat last week. Tested negative, but I had a sore throat, so bear with me, please. So our FY 2024 factors, we do have contractual obligations, fixed, or what we call fixed costs and budget drivers. We do continue to look at small annual capital items that have been moved into the operating budgets. We look at the continued needs for town facilities, for the maintenance and resiliency, any state and federal mandates, such as OSHA. Our OPEB liability, again, we want to fund that moving forward. Our debt schedule, previously approved debt, and as well as any new debt that might come on in the future. How is that going to be programmed in? And then our educational assessments. Okay, yeah, if you would, thanks.
You just advanced the slide. Don't go far. Thank you. So at the last regular meeting of the select board, I presented staffing requests for ongoing activities, ongoing needs, as well as the goals and objectives in the value statements. And so I made some refinements. So just going through the listing here, and again, at that last meeting, you had the department heads who manage that function or that division present to give some explanation. So for general government, for human resources, we're going to, I put forward a recommendation for one full-time equivalent department assistant to assist, Megan Downey, our human resources and benefits administrator. And we had shared a position who was located in our office. It was a department assistant who you saw taking many meeting minutes and also in that front area in front of Shauna. And instead, have a designated position for that position, for that function. So in the end, it would be one full-time equivalent for a department assistant for human resources and then a seasonal assistant to help with the seasonal onboarding and offboarding. And the column on the very right, the fiscal impact, which will total at the very end, shows what the change is for FY 24. So this is an additional amount to be budgeted and appropriated. So this is an additional amount to be budgeted and appropriated. The town clerk's office, she talked about the expanded voting and extended voting, as well as a part-time assistant to help with some of the other town clerk functions to assist with catching up and keeping current on various items, and that's for twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The airport, I had put forward a full-time airport administrative assistant, and at that time, the, the airport commission chair had said that a full-time person would be preferred, but if we needed to do a part-time person, maybe we can figure out a way to reallocate some of those functions to another department assistant within DPW. I put forward a part-time administrative assistant for the board's consideration, but did have a subsequent conversation with the airport commission chair. And what's important about his conversation is the amount of work that he's doing as chair and as a volunteer to almost run a department. And that's how I see the airport with a lot of the functions as a sponsor, including, you know, contracts that are being signed, grant management, and we have a great technical team with consultants. But right now, we have Terry Whalen, who's our principal projects and operations administrator. This is a function of his position, but it seems to be taking up a lot of time. There is funding available in the revolving fund at this point to fund a full-time person. In the revolving fund, we would have to cover benefits as well. It's another function of Mass General Law, but there's some technicalities with an airport revolving fund that it has to be related specific to the airport, and I definitely see this position. So I'm putting forward a part-time position, but I'm probably, will have some more discussion with you over the next couple of weeks, just to flush it out. I'm getting information as, you know, as recent as today, so. And I think this position is really important to have that connection to our finance team. We have someone who's taking minutes, and they're paid out of the revolving fund, but they're, they're just simply taking minutes, they're not really managing some of the follow-up items that need to be done, and including what we need to do as a sponsor. So this is not another airport administrator, it doesn't report to the, the fixed space operator or the airport manager or to the airport commission as a whole. It would be a town employee reporting to Terry Whalen as the principal projects and operations administrator. So much of that was explained the last time we met, except that a quick pivot is of trying to manage the budget growth a bit. So I put forth a part-time position for thirty-one thousand, five eighty-five, and I'm happy to talk further about that once we're done presenting the items. Public safety, you heard from Chief Anderson about the four community service officers and the seasonal positions, especially the work that they would do downtown, and that's forty-nine thousand. And then working with DPW, our interim DPW director, Bob Rooney, he was able to connect with the, with Megan, our HR benefits and administrator. And so we decided to not put forward one heavy equipment operator that would have been at the transfer station, and instead put forward a second gate attendant. So we have one gate attendant, but when they're off or using accrued leave, it requires one of the other heavy equipment operators to man the gate. So the gate attendant that we're putting forward also will be a great backup for recycling and managing that area or working in that area with the heavy equipment operators, who technically are the ones that go off Cape to transfer the, either the recyclables or the solid waste to the end resource area. So putting forward a gate attendant. I'm also putting forward a mechanic vehicle repair, special equipment operator, and this position would assist with the current special equipment operator, who's also a mechanic. OSHA requires two people to do some of this work, and frankly, the existing mechanic has been pulled away to do some other duties and functions of a special equipment operator. So this position that we, we highlighted a bit last time would also assist with emergency management for our generator repair and maintenance. So it's a DPW position, but has some emergency management functions just because of the high skill level. So that's for sixty-one thousand, six forty. And then the cemetery commission had put forward a request to have, instead of a nineteen-hour a week cemetery administrator, to move that position to full-time. So that would result in about twenty-six thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. So I'm putting forward that position to move to a full-time position, and all of these would take effect on July first, if approved at the town meeting. And then this last position, the last one, for DPW.
Yeah, a full-time department assistant to assist all of the DPW divisions. This was originally put forward in the water division. However, we feel that it's best to cover all the general fund DPW divisions, since there are two, primarily two administrative assistants, department assistants, already funded, the majority of their funding is from the water department. So this would help all the divisions over at DPW.
Community services, so we took the select board's recommendation. We put forward one shared clinical workers, clinical social worker for adult and youth, and hearing the comments and feedback from others, including the human services committee, I'm putting forward two positions. So there would be an adult position and then one for youth and families, and then they would coordinate with the council and aging department, police department, fire department, and recreation. So that net impact is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that's out of the community services department. And then there's two positions in natural resources that were requested that I'm holding at this time. One is a full-time equivalent housing and health inspector, and that has to deal with the short-term rental registration and inspections. I know the working group just met today, and they're getting ready to put forward a recommendation. I think that there just needs to be some more fleshing out for this position, which I can do before the, the board votes your recommendations to move forward with FinCom, but I'm holding on that. And I'm also holding on the full-time equivalent boat operator, marine mechanic in the harbor masters division, it's one position. I'm still working, working to receive some additional information on that, so I'm holding for now. So for what's being presented, it's seven and a half full-time equivalents, and the fiscal impact of that is five hundred and thirty thousand and forty, five hundred and thirty thousand, forty-five dollars. And that is a component of the wage and salary increases that Alex will be presenting.
And then moving away from the staffing changes, we're looking at the operating budget, and we always prevent the changes of note. So these are more or less the line items, and what we've done is look to see where there's been large, either percentage increases or dollar increases, because sometimes we might have a five thousand dollar increase, but it's a fifty percent increase in the budget. So that's why we have some of these that are very small, but they, they need to be called out. Again, the town manager's budget, up twenty-nine thousand, five hundred, and that's due to the shared position moving into the, this budget at a hundred percent. Audit, up twenty thousand dollars, and that's quite a large increase over a forty-five thousand dollar budget, but we're looking to get a fixed asset program. We need funding for the single audit. We might need to fund the library's audit, since their auditor will not sign off on his own audit, so we have had to pay for an audit, a separate audit. So again, we, we don't know if that's going to happen or not, but we're going to budget for it. Parking clerk, again, it's a small dollar amount, two thousand dollars, but again, it's a large percentage, so again, it was the increase for the parking tip, ticket application. The sticker permit office, again, ten thousand, six hundred dollar increase, cost for printed stickers, we've noticed that that has really gone up quite a bit, as well as for the online service. So it's a combination of both. Public safety, the police department, we just talked about the four community service officers, so they'll need uniforms and some training, as well as training for newly promoted individuals, so that's increasing by about thirty-eight thousand. Fire department, increase about twenty-two thousand, one hundred. Again, this is the expense line items, does not include contractual step increases or a cost of living. Increased cost for medical supplies, also our ambulance billing. If our ambulance billing cost goes up, usually we're getting more ambulance receipts, however, we do show it in the expense line item. Under the natural resources department, the harbor master division, forty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollar increase, a new line item for the trap dock ice machine for maintenance and, maintenance and repair of that ice machine. And then vehicle and equipment maintenance has been costly. And when we look at what's being requested, we always look back a couple of years and see where the actual costs have come in as well to support these increases. Under DPW, the fuel depot, seventy-five thousand dollar expected increase in fuel costs. We don't know what's going to happen, again, very volatile. Principal projects and operations, a large dollar amount, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And this includes, you know, contract increases for all the contracts that, the HVAC contracts, some of the plumbing contracts, the cost of electricity and gas for all buildings, and then contracted cleaning, which includes some of the seasonal cleaning for the restrooms, and then just maintenance for all the buildings. So that's why that's going up so much. And then DPW, the sewer department, again, contracted costs. We have a contract to do the operations for sewer, and then the utility and maintenance costs are also increasing. And the transfer station, our contracted services with CMAS to haul items off, and then vehicle and equipment maintenance have increased over the past year. Eighty thousand, seven hundred dollars increase in that budget. Community services, council and aging, an increase of seventy-five hundred dollars, and that's to support Chatham residents going to the Orleans daycare program. Employee benefits, we're projecting an eight percent increase in health insurance, which will be released, well, voted on mid-February usually, plus some other items, our retirement assessment is going up by two and a half percent, so an increase of three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, which may, depending once the health insurance is voted, may decrease. We'll see what, where that comes in. And then general insurance, our liability and property insurance. I don't know if anyone else has received their, a letter from their insurance agent, but we're expecting at least a twenty percent increase in property insurance due to being a coastal community. So a hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred dollars is programmed in. Flood insurance is also going up. So we'll look, we always look to see if we can go out for another carrier, so we'll look to see if Mayo would be interested in carrying, covering the town. Not sure if that's going to happen, but we'll keep you posted on that if we get any good news. But again, I've been told that twenty percent is probably the, the least amount that it will go up. So moving from the operating budget to the educational assessments, Montemoy Regional School District is our draft assessment right now, which includes debt, is nine million, six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three. And this is based on the regional agreement, as was amended at last year's town meeting, where each town is responsible for its own elementary school. For FY twenty twenty-four right now, the cost for Chatham Elementary School, or the difference between the way we used to be assessed and now we, how we are, is six hundred and fifty thousand, nine, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. And then for the Cape Cod Regional Technical School, we're looking at three hundred and seventy thousand, eighty-eight dollars. We had an increase of one Chatham student attending the tech, and that also includes the debt service for the new school. Again, both of these are draft, we will hear them sometime in February and March when they vote on them. Montemoy Regional School District will be making a presentation to this board on February fourteenth, and so they'll run through all their changes. Their overall budget has a three point six percent increase over their current fiscal year budget. They'll also be bringing some changes to the regional agreement. Most of these were the non-financial ones that we talked about last year, but this will be cleaning up all that language that had the interim regional school district when we were transitioning from, into the regional model. And they will also be discussing Chatham's assessment in some detail. And their final vote will take place in March. Again, the, the tech, the budget will be finalized sometime late January, increase of one student from twelve to thirteen, and as we all await the, subject to change, as we all wait for the health insurance vote and the chapter seventy figures or the governor's budget to be released. And then moving on to the water department article, again, a separate budget, since we, it's funded through water funds primarily, a total of three million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-one. So that's a seven point seven five percent increase to FY twenty twenty-three. Of that amount, two hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four is for salaries, no increase in staffing, same amount of staff. Expenses, two million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and fifty. We do have contractual, a contract for our water operations. We're in the final year of that contract, so that is a contractual increase in that expense line item. And then our overhead, which goes to the general fund, three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three, about three percent over the current fiscal year. And then debt service, based on the debt service for the water fund, and that does decrease a little bit for FY twenty twenty-four. The general fund does contribute four hundred thousand dollars to the water fund, and that is for fire suppression, so for, to pay for the water for our hydrants. So moving on to the FY twenty twenty-four capital plan, we have fifteen million, five hundred, thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars in requests, and of that, we're recommending, within the capital budget, three million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars recommended. Often, some of those larger items will be pulled out of the capital plan and voted on as separate capital articles, which we will be reviewing in some detail with the board over the next month or two. Again, in the capital plan, in the budget, we do include all items, five thousand to, this year, it's almost five million dollars, to get the overall financial picture. But the three point six million dollars does represent nine percent of the operating budget, not including any of those separate warrant articles, but within our financial policies. So here you can see the, what was requested by the different departments and what's being proposed. So general government had looked at, requested four hundred and seventy thousand, were proposing three hundred and ninety. Public safety requested two hundred and forty thousand, and they're getting all two hundred and forty thousand, we're recommending. Natural resources, one million, fifty thousand, we're recommending three hundred and ninety-five thousand. There will be a separate warrant article for three hundred thousand dollars for dredging outside of that, so that will be a separate warrant article, which we've done in the past. Public works without water, again, many of these will be larger borrowing articles, possibly, or ARPA funds, eleven million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred, and we're recommending just under one point five million dollars. And then equipment, these are for vehicles, trucks, boats, et cetera. The request, two point two million dollars, and we're recommending one point, one million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So again, moving forward, you can see the funding sources. We've programmed in three, just three point four million dollars in free cash, sixty-five thousand from the waterways improvement funds, ten thousand from the cemetery sale of lots fund, fifty thousand from the PEG access fund, and then we're repurposing some prior articles that have not been used, but will need to be repurposed to fund other things, and that is at the request of those departments. So if it was a, an item in the fire department's being repurposed for a fire issue, if it's under IT, it's being repurposed for IT, so we did that.
Alex, I just have a quick question on the prior slide, just, just a quickie. The, the, every year, we got public works coming in with a bang-on request, I mean, a very huge ask. Can you tell me what, is there anything out there that we need to be concerned about with this ask year after year after year, or is this just everything in the kitchen sink is thrown into that ask?
Um, excuse me.
Yeah, it's consistent, I mean.
There, there's a lot of things out of there, and then as they get pushed out, because things from FY twenty twenty-three got pushed out to FY twenty twenty-four, and we don't tend not to push them all out a year going forward. So we do have the belt filter press for four point eight million dollars is in there.
It was four and a half, Alex.
Yeah, it's, it's going up, unless you want me to increase my inflation article. So, and then we do also have a transfer station improvements.
Okay.
And I think- And I think a couple of other large, you know, we cut things back every year. There's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars requested for road maintenance, and we usually recommend an amount lower than that based on actuals. And also, looking back on how much is left over from prior years. So if they had a capital item that was funded at a hundred thousand dollars, and requesting a hundred thousand, but they didn't use anything, unless there's a really good story that they will use all two hundred thousand dollars moving forward, we'll request, or we'll recommend an amount lower. This has happened a lot with sidewalks. We have almost four hundred thousand dollars in sidewalks. So we are requesting a hundred thousand dollars for FY twenty-twenty-four, although the request was for two hundred thousand.
And I assume we're going to fully expend the capital budget for this year?
We look at that. That's something that we look at. You know, again, some of these articles, some of the items under the equipment are additional requests or subsequent requests because they went to order a vehicle, and it came in above what was appropriated, so they're asking for another ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars in order to be able to procure that vehicle.
I don't want to get you off your game, and I apologize for interrupting, but if we were to decide that we want to do something with the transfer station during the course of this year, would there be any funds in twenty-four for improvements to the transfer station at all? Or, and I'm kind of shooting from the hip here, but just in anticipation of, I think, some consensus on the select board.
So in twenty-twenty-two, we funded four hundred thousand, I think it was?
Four seventy.
Yeah, four seventy. And that's, that project's going to come back before you, hopefully before the meeting of the thirty-first. Our interim DPW director has worked with Weston Sampson to update the proposed phasing of that project, and certainly we need to bring it to you. You know, of utmost importance is the respite area for the workers and trying to figure out how to get that in first before the other items. So that's, that's coming, I think, probably on the meeting of the thirty-first.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yep. So we do have four hundred and seven thousand, okay, thank you.
Yep. So again, you know, we look at what's available and whether we have to borrow for funds, what funding sources are. As I mentioned before, we do have excess levy capacity, so if we want to move forward and the taxpayer wants to give themselves an increase in their tax bill, they could vote on that, and we would let everyone know exactly what that would mean. Again, that's similar to what we've done, or what towns usually do with a capital exclusion, but because we have excess levy capacity, we don't need to have the exclusion. We could do it for one year and then go back to the practice of as much levy capacity, just leaving it on the table. And Alex, again, ARPA funds, there's ARPA funds that we could look to see if there is, if Barnstable County will be coming out with any of these large projects. I think they're looking at more regional projects, but we'll look at that as well. And some of the project review criteria for the capital, I know you've seen this before, this began with the Collins Center, again, to preserve or enhance town access, assets, increase efficiency and effectiveness of government, fiscal sustainability, does it generate revenues, are there grants available, impact on savings in the operating budget? If we have a capital improvement, does it reduce the amount in the operating budget? Oftentimes, we look at this when we have vehicle replacements, you know, we ask people to say, how much have you expended on it the past couple of years? Is it going to save us money in repair and maintenance? Impact on utilization by the public. And then the influence on our local policy areas, what we call the Chatham factor, aesthetics, historic preservation, our economic growth, public health and safety, cultural and recreational opportunities, as well as our environmental sustainability. So some of the other articles pending review, the community preservation projects, the community preservation committee will be meeting, again, this coming Monday to review the final two applications, and then we'll be making their recommendations moving forward. Again, they have more requests than they have funding available, so stay tuned for that. Town projects, the childcare voucher program, traditionally funded at a hundred thousand dollars. Dr. Florence Selden pre-K funding, that was funded at four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this past year. OPEB funding, dedicated funding sourced through overlay surplus, a hundred and fifty thousand. Any housing initiatives, as I mentioned, we have a placeholder in there. The Eldridge Public Library HVAC system, again, coming in at almost double what we had first anticipated it to be. The belt filter press needed at the wastewater treatment plant, and then a water treatment plant for PFAS and iron and manganese at Wells Five and Eight. We always mention OPEB because it is a, OPEB because it is a liability. Again, other post-employment benefits, not retirement, health insurance. Right now, our balance in our trust fund is three million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. That was as of December. The reallocation of the land bank surtax of the, from three, three percent to the one-point-five percent has really increased the amount in this fund, so that was a great move by the town. So in FY twenty-twenty-two, just over five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue from that surcharge, surcharge tax went into the OPEB trust, and this year to date, just over two hundred and ninety-two thousand, based on the first half, so. Again, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar placeholder for OPEB funding from overlay surplus, and I just said the balance. And the OPEB trustees, next meeting will be on February twenty-third to make their recommendations, and I believe that Sharon Drown, our treasurer, has scheduled Bartholomew to come before the select board sometime before that. So FY twenty-twenty-four beyond, again, looking at priorities, policy issues and directives, what the select board goals are. We look at the social infrastructure, economic and community sustainability. OPEB is, again, there, community initiatives, our housing initiatives, coastal resiliency and climate change. COVID funding, this is probably the last time you'll see this on a slide, hopefully. And our drinking water supply, to ensure adequate drinking water supply to meet demand. And then the continuation of our wastewater project, which keeps our estuaries clean and helps the town. And then just final, our FY twenty-twenty-four budget calendar. So tonight, January seventeenth, we presented the town manager's recommended budgets to the select board, and the finance committee will also get a copy. On February twenty-first, the finance committee will make their recommendations to the select board, and then they will start meeting with all the individual departments during the month of March. The select board puts your approved budgets back to the finance committee for their review. And then on March twenty-third, the finance committee recommendations are due, and the annual town meeting warrant closes on March twenty-fourth in preparation for the annual town meeting, held on Saturday, May sixth, at nine-thirty in the morning at the regional middle school inside. Thank you.
Alex, is that a wrap?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. You did a heck of a job, as always, but very, very, very tight focused. You do, you do a great job, so I really do appreciate your, your efforts here. Mr. Castro.
We're going to have questions now?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex and Jill. I have a handful of questions or comments, but one thing that, and it's, it was a fine presentation, and by the way, when I first picked up the packet on Friday and I saw that it was fifty pages, I thought, oh my God, I'm going to read this at bedtime. But actually, it read very easily, and I appreciate how you, the work that went into this. One thing that's missing, it's not on any of the slides, is the council on aging, the Center for Active Living. And I know that, as I mentioned earlier, the board has asked, has been asked to do a feasibility study on Marconi, and I don't know whether that's a wise thing to do or not. We'll wait to hear back from Terry on that. But what happens if that either proves to be fruitful or not? What's the, what's the next, what are the next steps? I mean, suppose we decide, okay, we're not going to put it at Marconi, or we are going to put it at Marconi. It's going to have to go to town meeting. Where's the funding for that? Is it all going to be borrowing, or is there's going to have to be some design work? Suppose we decide to put it where it is now, for which there are some sketches?
It depends on what's going to come forward. So usually, design, when we, the town historically votes, design engineering and construction costs as one large project. But if we want to get to that phase, that design phase, to have a solid number, I guess, to move forward, depending on the location, I hadn't, I'm not sure.
Do we have to put a separate article in for the design?
Yes.
We could get that out of free cash, presumably?
It could be, or it could be a reason appropriate. So we would put it as a separate article, just depending on what the, I guess, what the extent of the, of the study that needs to be done. Or if, for some reason, there was already a solid design, just to get it reestimated, and then if there's a ballot question, that would still make it in time for the calendar that we put forward. It's just a matter of your deliberation, the board's deliberation of what to put forward.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose momentum on that project. I mean, it's, as everybody knows, how long that's been going on. Another item, you mentioned the transfer station, I'm glad Jeff inquired about that, because we had a thorough presentation of that a few years ago. And, you know, we were told, I think understandably, that there were significant issues of safety and health that we needed to address, so I think that's important to deal with. Another item that we didn't mention, it's not really mentioned in the report in your, in your written presentation, your budget message, but we've talked about it, and that is the prospect of adding new wells to the town water supply. I know Jeff has inquired about this. There was a study done by Weston and Sampson, but it's another area where I don't think we want to lose momentum. I think the board made clear that we'd like that investigated, to see if there are some areas where we could, locations where we could put some new wells in. Yes, Alex?
Yeah, I think the water department did put in a request for fifty thousand dollars to study South Chatham well field for at least iron and manganese.
Okay. Oh, good. I appreciate that. A couple of questions regarding these, the staffing, Jill. The position on the airport, I hear what you were saying about the importance of having that sort of take up some of the slack that currently is in front of Terry, Terry Whalen. I go back to our conversation, I think, a week ago, it's sort of the mirror image of what Elaine Gibbs was saying earlier. I think longer term, when the airport manager's contract comes up for renewal, we ought to be looking about how to, whether that should be reconfigured in some way. It's effectively a department of the town. I mean, it's a function of the town. We're the sponsor of it. It's not an, it has a certain measure of autonomy under state law, which we recognize, and we don't get involved in the management of the airport, but I think the more funding that can be obtained, what you're proposing is a pretty modest amount of money, from the airport revolving fund, that should be taken into account. The position on short-term rentals, which you have on hold, is that on hold for a future year or for the current year, if in fact, it looks as though what recommendation's coming forward? I don't know what, what it says, but I understand they voted today a recommendation, but I'm not sure what it is. But are you waiting for that to come forward and then decide whether you need this position or not?
Yes, so I, when we put the budget message together, it was last Thursday, I knew that the short-term rental working group was meeting this morning. I had anticipated that they may go with a registration or a regulation, but I wanted them to present that. And also, just circle back after today's meeting with the health agent, Judy Giorgio, just to really get a clear idea, or even a job description of what functions that this position could present, or would do, and present it to the select board. Again, trying to do it well before March first, but it just didn't make it in time.
Okay, so it's not ruled out for this year?
I, I haven't, so I do want to hear from...
It would seem to me that even if it's limited to registration only, that's a significant piece of work that probably the current staff can't handle, I would think. I don't know. The cemetery position, which again is a pretty modest increase, do we know, now my understanding is that a lot of the, the maintenance work is carried out by, on contract, that farmed out?
Up until this year, though, FY twenty-three, we brought cemetery maintenance under the DPW grounds division.
Okay.
So we're doing that all internally.
Okay. So the administrative position, I assume that he or she, I guess it's she currently, is responsible for selling grave lots, showing, meeting with people in that respect?
Yeah, it's a...
What else is involved in that?
The frontline person for people to meet with, either grieving families or to purchase lots. But also, we have a new database, a digital database, so that it's almost an inventory of every cemetery plot, historical records and so forth, and it's managing that system too. So volunteers, you know, getting their support for various events or holiday celebrations and doing some decorations at the cemetery. But it's, it's, it's a transactional position that's important, and it's, it's really the only administrator handling the cemetery commissions, policy directors, and so forth.
Okay. And then I think I just have one more. This is the capital improvement budget. A couple of items, and Alex, Alex mentioned one of them. On emergency road repair, though, it says only, they've asked for twenty thousand, and you're recommending ten. Is that enough money?
Historically, that's been enough to cover it.
Okay. And sidewalk construction, they've asked for two hundred, you're proposing a hundred and fifty. Again, is that sufficient?
Again, based on the balance that's remaining from prior years, they have almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I didn't think of one other item here, which I noted, in terms of larger projects, we mentioned the transfer station, the senior center wells. Alex, you'll remember, some years ago, we visited with the finance committee the infamous salt shed. What's the status of that, of the interim directors here? Probably is too, hasn't had a chance to look at that. Is that still an issue for the town? It looked like it was really important back then.
It still is. It's been permitted, so it's gone through the various permitting authorities, both internal and we had chapter ninety earmarked for that, but had to rearrange a few items. And I do have Bob Rooney, interim director, if you want him to...
I don't think we need to get into that level of detail, but I just wondered, you know, what had ever happened to that, because we hadn't heard much about it. There've been other issues, obviously, starting with COVID, that have taken, taken the attention of the board and the public. But again, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate the answers to my questions. We have a lot to do in this town, we always will, and I think it's important, we've been dealing a lot with housing on this board for the last year and a half, but I think it's important to understand, as high a priority as that is, there are other, other things that we need to get done in this town. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Castro. Other comments or questions for Alex? Mr. Shell?
Yeah. First of all, thank you very much. This is my first experience with this process and a document of this nature, and I was extraordinarily impressed, so I, and you described a lot of work going into it. I can only imagine just how much it was, so thank you for that. Let me start, notwithstanding Dean's comment, let me start with housing. Let me ask you, you put up about five or six things that are items to which you're making allocate, potential allocations of free cash, among which was housing, five hundred thousand dollars. Can I conceive of those essentially as reserves that are dedicated to those specific purposes but not committed?
Yeah, right now, what we've done is that I've put in a placeholder for some of those items. They would take a town meeting vote to, you know, put that into an article for housing or to appropriate it to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, whatever might happen. Again, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund did apply to the CPC for funding, so we'll see how that goes. But we did just expend money out of that fund for parcels, so we always like to have a placeholder, should something come forward on either one or two of those parcels, we probably will need money for, you know, test fit, design, engineering, I'm not sure, I think... I'm not sure, I think the town manager wants to say something.
Yeah, and just to add upon that, so when we bought the so-called Buckley property, it was a split between attainable housing and affordable housing.
Right.
And so 50% came from the trust. This segregated fund would be for attainable or workforce housing component of a development if we wanted to go that route.
Okay, so, but the next step you're saying would be to come from us, and it would be to say, we want to dedicate X hundred thousand or million dollars to be available for attainable or workforce housing, in essence, because it's town money, not affordable trust money. Have I got that right? So then let me ask the, the fundamental question, which is, $500,000 is just sort of a thumb in the wind, and it could have been 350, or it could have been 800, or something in a general range like that?
It could be. I put in 500,000. I was looking at the amount of the projected free cash that we would have. We're spending it down quite substantially, even though I don't have an amount right yet. It's not certified, so right now there is no free cash. But, yeah, we're spending quite a bit of free cash, what I've estimated free cash to be, down, and carrying over only about $250,000 for next year, which is good, you know, it's good to carry over at least a small balance for next year to build upon.
But it's also, and I, and I appreciate that, the, what you're talking about in terms of certification is fiscal '22, have I got that right?
Yes, this would be the 2022 balance sheet.
Right, and we also have some notion that there will be a generation of free cash. I understand that's entirely speculative, but that free cash is likely to go up as a result of fiscal '23 as well. Is that a fair estimate?
It depends on how fiscal year '23 closes out. You know, right now I'm looking at the first half of the year. I haven't really closed out the first half of the year to see where we've landed. We did increase our local estimated receipts, again, but the hotel motel came in very strong for the first half of the year, as, as did meals, so that's why you see the increase for next year. And then if we do take out the 2.25 million for wastewater capital, that would, because that has artificially inflated free cash, so to speak.
I, I'll leave you with the thought that it would be a good, strong statement if we perhaps even had more than $500,000 dedicated as a placeholder here, subject to all of the considerations you've articulated, but I, I think, and with some anticipation that '23 is, is likely to be a, a, a good year vis-à-vis that, to be aggressive with respect to housing, just as a mere statement, would be something I would generally support without knowing exactly how you get to that last, that last number. Let me ask you with respect to, oh, a simple question, the FTE estimates in your list of additional people, I, I assume those include all benefits that go with the salaries? Is that, those numbers?
No, the, the benefits are not in there. However, the benefits are in the benefit budget, and that's one of the reasons why that went up so much.
Okay, so they're somewhere else, but they're accounted for in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let me just ask about ARPA, and I don't really understand completely how one goes about accessing the money that currently is available to the, to the county, but it, it, would I be correct in understanding that perhaps that it would be possible for Chatham, as Chatham, to make applications for grants under, that, that would, that access, that would access, I guess, the 31 or so million dollars that currently is unallocated, so to speak, at the county level?
Yeah, I'd have to go back onto their website. They have a portal that we go in and we have to apply for funds. They had a small grant opportunity, which has now closed, so we're waiting to see when the, the medium or large grant opportunities come up through ARPA. But we'll look at the ARPA funding, and that's again why it's coming before this board shortly, as well as the $600,000 that the town currently has of its own ARPA funds. And it's important to note that Barnstable County, the Assembly of Delegates, did expand that to include revenue replacement, so it's not as stringent as it used to be.
Okay, I, obviously, revenue replacement is, would be, I, I would think would be lower on the list of priorities, given that some of the needs that are also potentially applicable to, to, to those funds.
Yeah.
And, and what I'm really angling for here is a sense of whether we on our own motion, without waiting for invitations from the county, could potentially have the ability to make applications for grants that would be in size disproportionate to the sort of generalized population allocation that we've been looking at to date.
And I think this is why we want to have the Select Board review all the different things, uses for ARPA and the projects that we have, that we kind of earmarked, that might be qualifying for ARPA. Again, previously, it could only be for broadband water or wastewater, but now you can use it for different things, so. But again, those are the things that we'll probably bring forward to the county.
Okay. Just a, a kind of a technical question, the 9% capital limitation with reference to the, the operating budget, is that, is that, how did, how was that generated, particularly in light of the fact that, that you can have independent articles of the, independent of the 9%?
That's one of our financial policies. It used to be lower than that, and we increased it a couple of years ago, and that was based on, when the Collins Center came in and looked at our capital improvements plan, and they said, you should have, you know, it should be a percentage, so the annual capital budget should be a percentage of the operating budget. So as the operating budget grows, so does the capital budget. But because it's funded through free cash and not any other sources such as borrowing, well, borrowing's the big one, that's why that's at the 9%, and then, you know, we'll let the, the taxpayers vote on anything separately. Also important to note is that we do pull out some of those controversial items from the capital budget article.
Okay.
So anything airport would always be pulled out to be voted on separately.
Okay, thank you. I, I, that was really more my education than anything else. I appreciate that. One last question, I, I'm the liaison to the Committee on Disabilities. I see you have a $250,000 item in there. Can you give, other than the recommendation of the committee and, and, and the staff support, how much do you, how, how much of that is related to some planning with respect to the, the advisory report, the consultant's report that we got with regard to ADA compliance generally around Chatham?
Yeah, Terry Whalen put that in, and that was definitely from that report, and we have a copy of that report. So we're programming $250,000 for the next five years, because the total amount was, I think a million dollars was needed for ADA compliance and, and upgrades. So we figured, well, you know, we can bite off a little bit at a time. The $250,000 we can fit in and fund it on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't have any other questions again, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Ms. Davis and Mr. De Castro for follow-up.
Thanks, Jeff. I just want to say that this is a really, again, every year it's always really an informative document to really set the tone for us to get going. Just a couple of questions. How many more IMI, IMA payments do we have with Howard?
Three.
Three, okay. And the other thing is just a matter of, when, the county money, I, I just get really frustrated that there, it's, I don't feel it's moving fast enough personally, you know, that the money's getting allocated to the towns. I, but I was wondering, did they have a, a deadline? Did the county have a deadline on their grant applications at all? Would they, is, the money need to be spent down by a certain amount of time? Do you know?
I believe it's 2026, and the county did have a deadline on the first round of grants, so we'll look to see when the second round comes up.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, thank you for the report.
Part of the funds are, are based on population, so they're ours, they're, they're reserved, we just have to put in the application for it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. De Castro for follow-up.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up to something that Mike was asking about on the ARPA funds, and Shereen just as well. I had a conversation with Randy Potash maybe a week and a half ago. She told me there's another tranche of funds that's, that's going to become available later this month or in February, so, and I, I thought it was as much as $10 million, but I would suggest you might, if you haven't already, confer with her. I know she's had some conversations with the town to see what, what that's all about. There might be some other potential there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Metters?
No, I just want to, I mean, I've been on this board since 2015, and I got to say we have a very, very strong track record, how we present these budgets, how we review them, analyze and break them down, discussion, and, and it's, it is good. It, it's a reflection of the community, it's a reflection on the, of the team Chatham, and it, it may, you know, it makes our job a little bit easier in some ways. You know, there's also going to be controversial items that come through our, our desk to, to review and support and not support and whatever, but, you know, I think we do a really, really good job of this, and I very much appreciate the effort you guys put into this. I think it's a good presentation, it kicks us off every year. You know, we, they say Chatham has a lot of things on the, on the, going on, that's kind of an understatement, we all, we do have a lot of things that we really want to review, but we handle it well, I think. So I appreciate this kickoff. I look forward to having specific discussions on each item, and, you know, again, this is a very good job, and I think this is a nice little step forward into technology and stuff, so one less treated kill, but, you know, it's, I, I do, I think, I think we're heading in more so in the, in the right direction, better direction, but we've, we've done well as community, and I applaud the, I applaud the team for doing what they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Metters. Mr. Shell, follow-up.
Yeah, I, just one thing I neglected to note, but I, I, and I don't want to get into a discussion of it, I, I accept your invitation for further discussion on the full-time versus half-time or part-time on the, on the airport assistant, so we'll leave it till whenever you bring it up. But I, I did feel that full-time was a better, a better, a better alternative, and I'll be happy to discuss it whenever you bring it up.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Just a couple of comments, Alex and Jill, the wastewater capital stabilization fund recommendation, we have 2.625 in there now, and we anticipate another one and a half coming shortly. So do you anticipate, are you going to, is your recommendation that we'd have 3.7 there for the stabilization fund, or 2, 2, 2, 265?
My recommendation would be to transfer the 2.265 from free cash, and then any future payments from Harwich for IMA funds go into that capital stabilization fund.
Including the one that's forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay. And then how do we finance this, this water press? And this is for the future, I get it, but every time I, I hear four and a half and 4.8, and those are big numbers. And even all the, the IMA funds from Harwich may not pay for that free press, the water press, so, free press, excuse me, but the water press. So, you know, if that's a piece of gear that we have to have in the wastewater treatment plant, it's critical. I, I don't know, I'm not an, I'm not an expert by any means, but it's a big number. So, so we really kind of get our arms around, okay, we got this number out there that's pretty big, $5 million bucks, how are we going to do that one? So whether it's next year, the year after, the year after, we still kind of need to be thinking about squirreling money, I'd be honest with you, to pay for that thing. Otherwise, that wastewater treatment plant is, you know, you know, not going to work, I, I guess, so, so I guess we need a follow-up on that as well. The other overarching comment I want to make is I want to make sure that on our agendas going forward, that anything that might impact this '24 budget, we make sure we, we feather in, and Jill, that's up to you and I. But for example, we are going to talk about the waterfront issues and whether we have any holes there in terms of funding, and so we want to think about how that may or may not affect the budget going forward, you know, whether it's, how are we going to, because every single project that, that 11-3 was going to cover, I think most members of this board felt that they were really viable projects and wanted to see them get done. So I'm just concerned that we're going to have holes in our, in our waterfront, in our waterfront plan. Mike mentioned the housing for 500K, I'd be warm to a further discussion of that amount. I also think that when we think about capital and our future needs and how we kind of array our, our, our resources here, that, that, you know, you guys talk about the Collins Center and the Chatham factor, whatever. Well, the largest Chatham factor I can come up with is coastal resilience and the impact of climate change, and that is, that is an excite, and that's a factor that we, we don't have a, we don't have a clue what's going to be at, excuse me, what's going to be coming at us for, for preparing for that. So talk about needs going forward, we have, you know, they're all over the place, but that I think is one that is going to be fairly difficult to anticipate and put a dollar value to. So that, in my mind, is a rather large Chatham factor. ARPA, you know, we do, I deal with ARPA almost every day, I look forward to the day when we can draw it down. It's been, at least in my world, it's been a mile wide and a mile deep as what you can use the monies for, so it's been very generous in how they've defined the use of the money. So it'd just be interesting to hear how, how it hits the municipality. Just the cemetery position, I'm the liaison there, and I have conversed with, with Mr. Wickham and others, and it's just, it's amazing how much work actually gets done in that cemetery office by half an FTE. You'd be amazed, just running volunteers. We have a lot of work to do with respect to keeping the record straight and, and really chronicling what has happened and what's available, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of work to be done there, so I will advocate vehemently for that, for that full-time position. And on the short-term rental working group, I think, you know, the, the group will have a recommendation, I think they, I couldn't stay there all day, but they went till noon time today, and I think they'll have a, a good argument for a position that probably will be at least logically or philosophically funded by a small fee by all the, all the rentals. So I'm not so sure it's going to really whack the budget in any way, shape or form, but go ahead, Corey. Go ahead, Corey.
No, I mean, we did go a little bit longer than our, into our original time slot, and I think the recommendation is going to include a small fee to help cover, you know, projected costs for staffing, potential staffing, and so I, I think the, I think the expected proposal that's going to come up for us has covered the concerns well, to bring up a healthy discussion from the Select Board.
So that, I think that's going to be part of the recommendation, so it may, may or may not have an impact on the budget, if you will. Although, we also want to see if, if in fact this board accepts it and then moves with the regulation moves forward, we want to see kind of what happens with budgetary concerns going forward as well, never mind staffing it. And then I'm glad, we talked about the transfer station, I think that's one placeholder we do not want to forget going forward, and I think there's, there are needs there. Sounds like we have it covered, and I'm glad Mike brought up ADA compliance, because that was a meeting we had some time ago, and now there's a series of recommendations that spanned more than one year, and I'm glad it's in the budget. But again, great job, appreciate the effort, and I just want to make sure, Jill, you and I and the rest of the Select Board, we bake stuff into our deliberations going over the next month and a half or so, that anything with budgetary impact. That's what I have. Thank you. Thank you much.
So if there's no further questions, I would like to have Craig Rowe, our IT Director, walk us through the digital platform, just so you can see how it works and how cool it is.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an overview of the software, but one thing that I did want to comment on, I'm just showing you the front end of this software. There's many factors that go into the backend, but Alex has been working to present this information in spread, in one spreadsheet, which has 12 tabs, 300-plus pages. She spends a lot of time cutting, pasting, going in, fixing narratives and, and just, it's extremely painstaking, the whole process. This new process that we have allows her to have department heads to update their information, specifically, you know, prior year accomplishments, things like that, and as we move forward in the software, we're going to add in different types of elements, you know, we'll have personnel numbers in there and be able to track a lot of, pretty much all the budget process in this software. And it's going to save Alex a lot of time, it's going to save a lot of time on us printing out budgets, you know, we spend, Alex probably spends two weeks just dealing with an Excel spreadsheet, and then we spend hours printing, et cetera. So this is just a nice piece of software. I'll start out, the, the software, the link to the software will be available on the Budget Central webpage. I spoke with Shawna tonight, we'll post that up first thing in the morning. We'll also put it on the town's main, main page, probably in spotlight, with just a link to what you're going to see tonight. The software is pretty versatile. It has a, we're just scratching the surface right now with what we can do with it. Obviously, I'll start out with the transmittal letter that we pasted in here, which you all have a copy of. It doesn't look as great in the online portion, but you'll see, we're, we're going to continue to enhance it and make it look better as we move forward. So I don't want to go too much into it, but this is basically exactly what Jill had handed Jill had handed out to you. You'll see across the top here, there's a handful of tabs, and I'll go through these just very quickly. Alex has put in a history of the town with some information about the town here, town seal, et cetera, just pretty standard information. We have some demographic information about the town. This comes from some census information, and the company ClearGov provides this. And when Jill and Alex were looking at it, you know, it's pretty informational about what type of demographics the town actually has. You know, for example, here, our household, family households, 52%. Married couples, 54%. Singles, seniors living alone, 22%. That's a big number in a town like this. Population overview gives us, all based on census information, gives us an overview of where the town is. Daytime population, 7,066 people. And then, population by age, and you see, you know, there's some big numbers here as we get up in the age graph. Housing overview, and this goes along with the housing, affordable housing comments, right here, median household income. It's a nice tool to be able to have to the town. And this is all part of a free service that comes with the software. So they continually will update, they'll hit the census information, they'll continue to provide this information to the town. We have the organization charts. These don't look that great, and I've spoken with the vendors. They're very hard to read, but the townwide organization chart here, starting with the Chatham voters and the select board, and as it moves down the chain here. We are looking at some enhancements where you can actually zoom and can actually see the pertinent information. Alex has filled in some basics of budgeting here, which is a nice little overview. We also have the town's financial policies in here, all attainable at a click, once you click on the link and start to go into the budget. We have budget overview. Now, this will be something that'll be enhanced as we move forward. A lot of the budget overview is already in Jill's letter, so as we start to build out the site a little bit more, this will expand out. But what we did, what Alex did this year is put in the personnel changes. So you can see, at a click here, these are the personnel changes. Don't have to scroll through pages of information. Funding summaries, general fund here, gives an overview of where we are. Now, Alex has put all this information in from Excel spreadsheets. A lot of this is keyed in. And then each year, what we'll do is we'll take that spreadsheet, Alex will update it, she'll pull it out of our financial records, she'll update it, and it'll populate right into the system, which saves a lot of time from having to sit with the individual Excel spreadsheet and type in every single budget number. So this will be a nice option here. This goes into expense by type, and you'll see a trend here. There's expense, expense by type, and you'll see a kind of a similar trend throughout the whole site. These here, by functions, this is how things are broken out. 16% for public safety, education 21, et cetera. And the water fund here is also in here. So you can go through revenue by funds. And we can add information here, and we can also change up whatever needs to be presented, so that we present the most valuable information to the general public. Once we get into departments, the town of Chatham is broken up, and you'll see in the budgets, it's broken up into general government, public safety, community development, natural resources. So what we've done is I'll jump into public safety, we'll go to natural resources. So on the left-hand side here, there's a little tab, a little arrow, and you'll click that, and you'll break down into each department within that group there. But if you click on natural resources, it's going to give you an overview of their budget. And this is what all of their rolled up expense lines are, and expense by type, personal services, expenditures, et cetera. And then, once you go into, and an organization chart at the high level within natural resources. So this just has conservation agent, health agent, harbor master, basically all the broken down, the higher level. What we do is, once you get into the departments, we'll go into health, for example, here. It'll give the overview of what the health department's functions are, and it gives a budget statement, which Alex updates annually, which is going to be really nice next year. She'll just go into the backend of the software, click on budget statement, update it. She doesn't have to scroll through 20 Excel spreadsheets, et cetera. Staffing numbers here. And then we have prior year accomplishments. These types of fields here will be filled out by the department heads and whoever is, you know, responsible for providing this information, which is nice. Again, saving time going through that Excel. Expenditure summaries. So this is where we have our budgets. You're going to, broken down by expense type. Yet again, you'll see pretty much standard across the board through most of the departments. You'll see a department description, a budget statement. If there are staffing, there'll be some staffing numbers. You'll see a prior year accomplishments, expenditure summary, which is a higher level, expense by type. And then, there's an organization chart. So this goes down another level from where Bob's, from where Dr. Bob's position was. So you'll know who's in each department and who's responsible. If you click down spreadsheet breakdown, this is very similar information to what you previously had in your department breakdowns. It's going to give you your salaries, your temporary wages, et cetera. The 22 actual, 23 adopted, which is what was appropriated for that year, 21 actuals. It's going to give you the differences between the 23 adopted versus 24 budgeted, which is Jill's, the recommendation of the town manager. And you're able to see all the expenses broken down in here. I'll just scroll to the bottom here. You have your organization chart, and then we have the staffing for each department, how many, the staffing is broken down. Now, this is just a copy of a spreadsheet that we just pasted in, but the goal is, is the software has backend capabilities where we can put in every position in town. It's going to automatically calculate a lot of this information, rather than, yet again, having Alex have to go and the staff go in and continually update this spreadsheet.
Craig, could you go up for a second?
Yep.
To the spreadsheet. Yeah, okay. Here, you see the, go up a little bit more. A little bit more.
Yep.
To the top where it has the titles.
Titles.
Titles, yeah. Okay, see, there's a notes. We can type notes into the budget. So if there's a request for increases, and you'll see some of them are in there. I've typed them in some of the departments for reasons why they've gone up. And those will show in the budget book and on the digital budget book.
And yet again, you can go through each of the breakdowns here. I think we were talking previously on the railway, I think it was the Railway Museum. There's some information here. Alex found a way to put in some images, which I think just enhances things and makes it look, just adds a little bit of a bump to the site. Now, as you see here, I forgot to hide this. So they did have prior year accomplishments, expenditures by types. And you can click through these here, continuing, you know, lots and lots of information here about each department and how things are broken out, prior year accomplishments for these groups here. And then we get into capital improvement. The capital improvement is, right now, we just have the one-year plan posted. I'm working on finalizing, just moving some numbers into appropriate columns. But this ties out to Alex's number here, and you'll see, broken down. Now, on the capital side, if we look at, let's say, I'll find one here, conservation requests. The equipment is rolled into the department. So you might see a number on one of the, oh, right here. This is a good one here. Because you'll see road maintenance, there'll be road maintenance, trail maintenance, all of these projects, these capital requests. But what you'll see is you'll see a one-ton truck. So your bottom-line number might look a little bit different, because the equipment is being rolled into the highway department. So you might see an extra $140,000 in the highway department, think, oh, where's that money? It's because when we do this, we don't separate out the equipment. We put it into the actual capital for that department. And I think there was a question on the rotary surfacing here. So you click on the option there, and it gives a bit of a breakdown with some description and information, project justification about the types of projects that we're doing. The site, you can also print out specific things that you'd like to have a copy of. You know, this might be good for the finance committee if they break it down and say, okay, you know, Joe Smith's going to take care of all the natural resources. So you'll be able to go in here and select print, if you pop your email address in here. I would like to just see all of the requests. So let's say, public safety. I just click these boxes here and create digital budget book. And takes about maybe five minutes or so, and they'll send you, and I printed one out before this. You get an email that looks like this, and says your digital budget book has been requested. You'll be able to click on it, and it's going to give you the specific departments that you requested. And I can't, this one here, I did IT. So this is a copy of the IT budget. So you can go through and see exactly what the expense lines were, and prior year accomplishments, and be able to print out just a copy of that department. You can do it for police, fire, whichever department you'd like to review. And it gives you the full breakdown. I do apologize for the books that we printed out. The font is a little bit small. We've been playing around with the sizing. If I make the font too big, it doesn't look great on the digital copy. And if I make it too small, it doesn't look great in the printed-out version. So, but all the town information is now available here. And once the budgets have been voted, we'll go back in. Alex will go in and update the numbers, update any narratives that are appropriate there, and it'll be ready to go as a new copy of the budget, where previously, we would, it would take, you know, a few days where you'd have to go through and update the pages, et cetera. So, but we will have the link available by the, by tomorrow morning. Shawna and I will post it up. And yeah, if there's any questions.
Super, Craig. That's very impressive. It's not, the department heads don't enter information in the system, do they? Or it's not a budget system, per se, but it's a...
This will be.
It will be.
So this will, they will, I'll send them. They can look at their own departments. They can enter things in. I can sit there and say yes. I can send it back and say no. I could ask for more information. I could say yes. Jill could say no. So it's really, it has a lot of power to it, and it's going to make, I think, everyone's life much easier going forward. And I just wanted to point out, because you noticed, you know, Jill and I both see the red numbers where it says it's over budget on some of these items, and I noted it in the, underneath the graphs in the budget book. That's due to the fact that we have year-end transfers that we make every year, and those aren't budgeted. So it looks like some budgets are over budgeted. However, we cover those through our year-end transfers. And it doesn't go into their budget, so it doesn't make, go away.
One quick follow-up. Clear.gov, is that something we get for free? We have license?
No, we pay for the service, ClearGov. And they do have, again, the personnel budgeting, the operational budgeting, capital budgeting. They have a transparency site. Currently, we're using OpenGov for our transparency site. We're not planning on going away from that. And I think there's one other platform that they have. But again, it's, the personnel budgeting has a lot of information where you can make projections going out. So if, you know, if health insurance goes up and the cost of everything, it's really more time than I have right now to get started on that. But that will be something in the off-season.
All right. Thanks, Alex. Dean had a question.
I was just going to say, it's great. I just was curious as to, how many other, do you know of any other towns on the Cape who are using this? It's a great product.
I believe at least one other town on the Cape, but there are multiple towns around that are using this specifically for their budget, digital budget books.
And they're the ones, it's ClearGov that inputs the information on, that you started with, the background information about the town, the demographics. They're the ones that come up with that?
We put in the town information. They provide the demographic information. They go out and they capture, they take the census data, and they input it directly into this field for us. So this is part of a free service that they offer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Davis?
This is a really neat program for you guys, and really, really cool. Just a question. So let's say we have last year's budget in there, and we're going to be working on this year's budget. Are you archiving, like, would you archive this year's budget to start and work on a new budget? How does that all work?
We haven't transitioned over yet, but what they do offer is, they offer multiple years of budget. So once we finalize the 2024 budget on this platform, we will create a 2025 budget next year. The '24 budget will be accessible in this similar format. We'll update the heading here to say, you know, 2024 voted budget, however we want to name it. And then, yes, you'll have a copy. So similar to the Budget Central, which is right here, previous budgets, you'll also have another link to, and what we did here, you'll have, you know, town manager requested budget. You'll have a link here, and then you'll have the voter budget. And then next year, we'll start a new 2025 budget, and I'll keep moving forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Shell?
Yeah, two questions. And I'll ask them both at the same time. The big question is data security and protection from hacking or whatever. And then, I thought, clarification, I thought I understood you to say that the organization charts would allow you to see who's where. Does that mean individual people or just titles?
So at the higher levels, for example, natural resources, it'll have health department, conservation, shellfish. Then, once you go into the individual departments, it will break down the positions, not with names, but the position of the staff. So, for example, right here, this is kind of the hierarchy. It goes, you know, Dr. Bob, and then the conservation agent, which is Renee Gagny, and then administrator, and then wetlands. So this is all the people that are underneath the hierarchy within the department. These are actually the positions.
Yeah, no, I got that. But for some, I mean, for you, for example, you just named those off the top of your head. For some of us, it would be helpful if there were somewhere where the actual names of the people were in the box.
Yep, right. Oh, okay, yeah. Adding the names of the staff, yep. So the staff show up actually here, in the staffing thing. But yeah, I guess if Jill and Alex, yeah, we can put the individual positions in there. We can add them in. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You know exactly who's in there. Perfect.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments? It looks great. You guys have done a lot of work. Good job. Any other comments? Okay. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Second. Okay. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Thank you very much. Good night, Chatham.